All right, we'll move on to our 10:30 a.m. Item Public Hearing in consideration of the final recommended budget for fiscal year 2425 for the County of Lake and special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors. And I'm going to skip right over to Ms. Moreno.
Good morning, Casey Moreno, Deputy County Administration Officer. So today I have in front of you the final recommended budget for fiscal year 2425. So we want to present data a little differently this year. And so we took a chart that was developed about seven years ago with a expenditure breakdown of core services by area. So you can see the law enforcement is about 67% with roads and then the other remaining core services. What I found interesting about this is going back even from seven years ago, the percentages were pretty much the same, within a couple percent up or down. So just to give you another idea, that's the last year fiscal year 2324 expenditure breakdown for core services, which includes law enforcement, roads, and then other core services. And so it's within a few percentage of even the six-year average. And then to break down by each of the areas, we have law enforcement parks, ag, and UC Cooperative, museums, senior citizen programs, animal control, veteran services, library, and roads. And this is also the six-year average. So next up, we have sales tax. So you can see that it is going down slightly. The Bradley Burns is pretty stabilized, but it is decreasing a little bit each year. And then Prop 172 is going down a little bit more extreme than the other. Property taxes have continued to climb. The estimated amount that we put in for 2425 was based on the figures that were available in April. And so the end of the fiscal year last year, there was a bump. There was more taxes that were collected. And so we will be increasing the amount that we are budgeting for 2425 at midyear. We also got the ABA, which is anticipating that we will get more, a higher percentage this year than we have, than we did last year. So we will be increasing that at midyear. Next is the transient occupancy tax. So it has climbed over the past few years. We are anticipating, we did see a little bit of a decrease last year, but we are anticipating to come back up and may not be to the extent that we are hoping, but we will be changing that midyear if we feel there is a need for that. So cannabis tax, since the inception, it has been fairly low until 2021, where it was 8 million collected, went down to 6 million, then 1.8. So last year, when we were developing the budget, we were anticipating it to be about 1.5, which is what we had originally budgeted last year towards the end of the fiscal year. It did increase quite a bit, so we are anticipating it to be closer to the 2.5 that was collected last year, which we will be changing at midyear. So to give you an idea of the cannabis tax allocation by type, it is split 30% for planning, code enforcement, water, resources, environmental health, 30% for law enforcement, 30% for economic development, housing, and risk reduction, and 10% to youth programs. So you can see the ending balance from last year is that second column there, or row, I'm sorry. And then the new funding this year, with the expenses taken out, remaining balances at the bottom. So here are the ARPA Committee's recommendations. So we have the three new projects at the top and then the changes down below. So the NCO Build Program, additional $200,000 with the request that we are requesting the discretion to be able to change that to fit whatever a cohort is, if it's the 265 or if they need a little less than that. The Housing Strategic Plan is going down a little bit, as well as the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And then the Housing and Economic Development Department is also decreasing with the EMS contract being zeroed out because that, it's not going to be happening before December 31st of '24. So with those changes, the approved and the proposed changes, it leaves us where we are at the, on the other presentation. So we are still anticipating spending all funds and then do request your board's approval to be able to move funds towards the end of the fiscal year to reallocate to ensure that we are spending them all. Position allocation changes. There was quite a few positions that are being changed, requested to be changed. With most of the, most of the departments are removing positions to allow for these new positions to come in. They are largely being, they are largely higher positions than the positions that are being removed. There is the unfunded positions. There is also a couple changes that I have for the position allocation that is before you today. Would you like me to go over those now or later?
Please.
Okay. So on the position allocation change, there is in Public Works, the Financial Coordinator that shows unfunded. It should show funded, because they would like to fill that now. And then under Code Enforcement, there is two code enforcement officers that are unfunded. Those were recently funded by a separate resolution, and that was missed. So those should all be funded. Capital asset changes. There's a few new projects, with some projects having increases. A few notable ones are the new criminal case management systems for the DA. Special Districts has various projects, and the landfill expansion project is increasing. And now I'd like to introduce Director Jones from Behavioral Health to give a financial update.
Just real quick while she's walking up. For the ARPA, for the Middletown Multi-Use, that will cover the entire amount, because it looked like that was changed from 192 to 250. Because I remember, at least from our notes from ARPA, it was 192 originally.
There was 192, and then there was an additional
That's right.
191. So we ended up doing the 250.
Another super quick ARPA question. I saw some planning money in there for special districts. Was that earmarked for specific projects to be studied? I'm seeing yes. I don't suppose South Main Street was among those projects. Okay, thank you for that clarification. I'll come back to that.
Do you want Robin to tell you what exactly was she was walking up?
No, because mainly I'm going to make an ask for something that we just confirmed isn't in there right now, so.
Sorry for the interruption.
Not at all. Thank you, Board. As you are aware, our revenue is from Medi-Cal largely, and we have to submit an intergovernmental transfer of our share of costs to the Department of Healthcare Services to draw down funds. On August 21st, we uploaded $1.8 million to our IGT account with the state, and since then, we've received 1.5 million back. I expect to receive between 6 to 8 million actually back. So this is good news, though. It shows that the metaphorical blockage, as it were, is beginning to clear, so they are processing our claims. Expenditures, the biggest increase that we've seen overall in our expenditures is related to hospitalization services, acute hospitalization services. There are increased costs associated with those services, as well just as increased volume. So those two factors are driving our costs up, but I also believe that's pretty consistent across California. We have seen a lot of increased revenue. Of course, we're still waiting for payment, but these obviously are, it's good to see revenue come in. It's good to see the math math. And we do anticipate being able to pay off our short-term loan sooner than later, which also is really great. Our fiscal position has definitely been improving significantly. So our goals for fiscal year 2425 are to continue to tighten up and further sophisticate our monitoring and control of expenditures. We're implementing stricter oversight on hospitalization costs to mitigate unexpected expenses. We're also working on enhancing revenue streams, continuing to pursue opportunities arising from payment reform and the other intersection of funding opportunities. We are also establishing a contingency fund set aside just to, you know, weather us through storms, similar to what we've seen before, and quarterly assessments of our financial standing and just health checks, make sure we're doing well. So overall, things are looking really good for behavioral health.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? And I know you mentioned you want to rebuild or build contingencies. At this moment in time in the 2425, there's no reserves left, at least for behavioral health. There is some stuff left for substance use disorder. Hopefully, we'll see some of that funding that you'll receive from all that work that you and your team have done go back into those reserves to help build that contingency fund.
Yes, I would say that our first priority would be paying off our debt and then working on saving money.
Appreciate the update. Thank you very much.
Oh, what? Okay.
I think we're good. Back to you, Ms. Moreno.
So that concludes the presentation. And then we do have one additional change for probation in their account 4070.
All right, I'll say the amount, 472,821. And what are we doing with it, Ms. Moreno?
So that was, we moved the money from 4070 into various other accounts because we accidentally took it away. And so we needed to move it at final recommended budget, and so now we need to replenish it.
Okay. And what's 4070? Because that's not probations.
Yeah.
Are there any questions, comments? Supervisor Green?
I don't know that anything can be done today. I'm just going to bark at the moon just a little bit. On the capital asset list, on page one, right up top, I'm very excited to see $2 million for a water line on South Main Street and Sota Bay Road. On page three, I see our Sota Bay Road widening project and the last drubs of funding that are going to need to progress on that. What I don't have is the connection of the dots. The page one allocation, that's a $2 million can that we've been kicking down the road for several years. So my question on ARPA funding was, if I can do nothing else to push this matter forward, then carve out a little additional planning money for special districts. I'd love to think that the city will get its ducks together and come up with a modified annexation proposal. But at this point, I think it falls squarely on the county to examine whether we need to spin up a CSA or other type of funding mechanism to get the water lines down there and get fire hydrants in there before we pave this road. And if we're going to proceed and pave this road without the water line, then everyone needs to know we're going to be diving in there and asking for another million dollars a year or two down the road to fix whatever happens when we do get water lines down there. So again, I'm not asking our new directors in any sense to tackle this. I just want to note for the board's consideration and admin and everyone else that there's a disconnect between our capital assets listed for construction of the water system and the project, which is much farther along to actually pave the road. So it's more of a comment. I don't know if we can do something on the fly to get special districts some money to take some additional investigative, investigative steps, or if special districts has it within their current budget allocation to tackle an update of the study that was done, I think, in 2019. But I've been very firm in my desire for fire hydrants on South Main Street, and I've been equally frustrated every step of the way in trying to figure out what the next step might be. And I don't want to burden my successor, Mr. Rasmussen and that. So that's just a kind of a comment. If there's a budget fix to be made today, I'm going to beg for it, but I would have to rely on staff to propose one.
Thank you for your comments. Just going to check in with staff. The $2 million is not just a fictitious number that's in there. That's the money that's allocated for that. Correct? I'm asking a question I know the answer to, but I just want to ask it out loud.
Yes, it's the one that's been allocated for quite a few years for that water main project.
And so my suggestion, since there's money made available, that your conversation with special districts would be supported by funding that can probably be used in multiple ways, whether that's design, whether that's feasibility study, and to just check in with Director Borey and see what her thoughts are and what her department has planned or not planned and what she might think is the right way to move forward. But I would definitely open up that conversation just to see what's possible, because the money is allocated and is there. And I'll agree with you, there's a need for fire hydrants, but I know that there's needs for fire hydrants in every district that we serve, and we need to work on those things everywhere. But luckily, you have $2 million that's been allocated that can be utilized, and so I would have those conversations. I hope that's closer to what you would hope to have for an answer.
I appreciate the pep talk, but that was, what, two supervisors ago? And it's just interesting when we squirrel money away and absolutely nothing happens for years, so.
And I would have other conversations outside of this, because there's some background information you may need to obtain to understand maybe why some of this got held up. All right. Any further comments from board members? I do have a brief comment, and I'm going to pick on two specific departments. One of them is a division. One of them I've been bugging for a while, but I'm just going to keep bugging until we get to where I hope that we can get. And I'm looking right now at code enforcement under the fines, forfeit penalties, and forfeitures are actuals from 2223, or that we receive $15,000 in fines, forfeit penalties. And we adopted zero for 2324, and we are at 31,250. And my hope is that, number one, I'm looking at the amount of general fund that's being utilized to help support this department, and that change in behavior to better our communities, fines can help with some of those things to ensure that we're not just doing the work for other people and taking their responsibility. But I want to see that number grow to decrease the dependence on general fund, to get also people's behavior to change. I think it's a win-win-win. It sucks if you're getting fined, but we have code and regulations for reasons. And so that's one. The other one is, we've all heard multiple times, especially in the recent six months, greater need for animal control. And I don't see fines in the revenues for animal control. And I feel that one of those ways to deal with animal control, similar to code enforcement, is to enforce the rules and regulations that we have. And I would love to see a line item, maybe it's not 31-90 fines, forfeit penalties, but something along those lines that goes along with animal control, because that is one of those tools that we are able to utilize to really gain more control over what's happening in our communities, where animals are either a nuisance or being harmed in ways that we don't want to see. And so I want to see both of those be utilized in ways to better the community, not harm the community. But I think they're being underutilized to get to the changes and the outcomes that we're looking for. And I know there's been a lot of work been done at the code enforcement level. I'm seeing the emails go back and forth to get the data ticket finalized with the policy, and I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to it. But I feel that our projection, our projection is low, which leaves to the dependence on general fund, which, in my opinion, doesn't incentivize enough to get both animal control and code enforcement away from as much general fund dependence. And so I just wanted to make those statements, because I think that we're missing an opportunity to get our communities to conform to what our needs are and what everybody wants to see in their communities as well. So just a statement. Any further comments or questions? Supervisor Pisca?
Well, additionally, I was, you know, I think we're leaving a lot on the table with the, with, without the cannabis fines, too, when we have violations with cannabis. And we had a hearing just recently where it could have been a significant fine, and so I think that is definitely a bigger bang. We can start realizing those.
Thank you. Supervisor Green?
Of course, I would be remiss if I didn't gently disagree with my colleagues on that, especially on cannabis. If you can't force compliance with the threat of felony prosecution, the idea that you're going to fine people in a compliance when the people guilty tend to abscond more often than not, you may succeed in getting properties upside down and having a bunch of impacted property owners, and maybe there is some benefit in boosting compliance in that. But I'm more sympathetic to the idea that we take a look at enhancing animal care and control, just because we all know there's great needs in that department. So we do want to boost compliance, and fines can be one of those tools in the toolbox. That's fine, but let's use that tool with moderation.
Thank you for your comment. Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah, I just wanted to also chime in on that. I think when you, the meeting last week, you seen that there was folks that were willing to take a fine rather than, in some instances. And I'm not sure if it's the amount that's stated, but I mean, if we can get into a realm where someone would rather have a fine than lose their permit, you know, I just think there's a way to fit that in the middle. And also, I know that all, the issue as well is understaffing. So I know that if there was enough staff to tell them, look, you're going to be fined if this happens, but right now, they're just kind of going around and finding different, you know, violations in the county when it comes to just garbage dumping, things like that. So it's hard for them to kind of go and, like they did when they had the task force and roadmap task, where they were able to go up there and say, hey, look, you're going to be fined if you do X, Y, and Z, and they would cut down their plants, or vice versa. But I think that's the issue right now, but if we can get to a point where we can implement that, it'll alleviate some of the need for pulling licenses, you know. So I just think that that's a good option if we can get to that point. I know we're still working on getting officers, and I think when that takes place, I think we can be in a better position to do that. But I agree with Supervisor Pisca.
Thank you very much. So let's go ahead, and if there's no more comments or questions, let's open it up for public input. Betsy Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Great, thank you. I just want to explain about the road widening delay. There was about $11 million provided by the State Transportation Improvement Program under Caltrans, and Caltrans is not willing to execute that project until the, I mean, until there's an agreement to dig one trench one time. That's, that's the prohibition there. The City of Lakeport has had the annexation of that territory in its general plan for probably over 20 years. Lafco came within inches of getting approved, approval for the annexation that was, that failed because of one property owner that happens to have a business down there. I think that it would be very important and worthwhile to reexamine that whole project and do it with the city involved and come to some sort of an agreement. It is absolutely insane that we do not have fire suppression in that light industrial commercial sector, which is so valuable to everybody in the county. And the, and the bickering over the sales tax exchange that Lafco has to negotiate is something that the county needs to, to just knuckle under and get done. I thank Mr. Green for his comments and appreciate the frustration. The other thing about the code enforcement violations and fines and so forth, the, my understanding is that they, they are somewhat complaint-driven, and code enforcement provides the alleged violator with a 10-day period of corrective action option before they conduct an inspection. And so, yeah, you're absolutely correct that this is not, this is not an effective system for actually preventing damage and injury to the environment or to the mitigations that are associated with the permits. And I think that should be examined as well, but please look at that South Main Street project. Please take, take the time and go in and find out what's involved and get that fixed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. I see no further hands in Zoom and no one moving. I know that I did mention code enforcement, and Director Turner did come to the front row. If you had a comment to make, I want to make sure to give you the opportunity.
Thank you. I didn't want to intrude, because, you know, you're all doing your statements. We do look forward to implementing the, the citation and fines service this year. We didn't want to go overboard on estimates, of course, because it's a new service, so we did go conservative on that. As far as the code enforcement, as well as how we deal with cannabis permits in community development, the board has tasked us, tasked me, with working with the permates who want to be legal and holding accountable those who blatantly disregard our codes. And that is how we handle cannabis. It's also how we work out in the field in code enforcement. And we do happen to have a very high self-abatement level, because we do approach our neighbors as neighbors, informing, educating first, before we start doing the punitive actions. So thank you. Thank you for, for all the attention you give to our department. Love it. Thanks.
And I'm also glad to see that, that there was a correction made, that the two code enforcement officers are no longer unfunded. And I believe that gives you a total of eight? Six? Code enforcement officers? So that's great. That'll make a difference. I still see a hand from Betsy Khan. I'm thinking it's leftover. It was leftover, thank you. And without any further comments coming from the public, let's go ahead and close that up. Again, obviously, we went through a much more deep-dive process back in June. This is just the quick fixes and smaller changes to the overall. Appreciate your presentation and report, and obviously, everyone involved in making this budget process occur so that we can move forward with this year's services and expenditures. Let's bring it back to the board for our actions.
I see a pair of resos in the recommended action. I will offer the first resolution adopting the final recommended budget.
Hold on one second. County Council?
And it will be
As amended with what was presented by Ms. Moreno?
Yes.
As amended.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
I will offer the second resolution establishing new classifications, and I don't know if we amended that or not.
Actually, I'd like to pause real quick on that, and I apologize. I forgot this was one of my questions. Are we allowed to just create classifications without going into any kind of negotiation with, are we just adding them to a contract of an MOU? Because they would be under a union if we're creating a new classification. Do we have a process we're supposed to follow prior to approving it here?
Go ahead. Once your board potentially approves it here, it'd be dependent on meet and confer with the union, and that's when
So it's kind of like a tentative approval that we're doing for those two new classifications?
Correct.
Okay.
Offer the resolution tentatively establishing new classifications. Offer the resolution tentatively establishing new classifications.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.